Nice, thank you. I'll give you guys a quick flashbang. Boom! What up dudes? Yo, Flesh and Bones, David a gifted sub man. Guys, thanks for all the love. Appreciate you guys. Thanks for all the loves. Thanks for all the loves. What the fuck is, where's this fucking meeting? You have a dent? Yeah, listen, I'm Tim, I'm Tim the Tamman Jr. I'm fat, I'm bald, I have a dent. I just need more fall damage. I just need more fall damage and I'm good. Hello Abdul!
The fuck are you wearing?
I usually take off.
Hello Judges, you looking beautiful today?
Hello Mr. Vinnie, how are you?
I'm doing great, how's it going with you?
Actually last night Mel came in and thought he was on trial.
So what's this town hall meeting about, Ms. Judge?
Uh, well, there's more laws. Uh, Mayor's Office got some stuff to talk about and then the police officers uh, want a law to come back and a lot of people don't like it.
They want a what to come back?
They, they want a law to come back.
Oh, fuck the police!
I know, I know. Everybody's gonna have their opinion. Maybe.
I don't know if you can Sofia, are, are you sure you can wear something?
Chat, should I talk to about Wayne's case? Nah, I can't, I don't, don't let me get started with that bullshit, please? Don't let me get started with that bullshit with Wayne's case dude! What's her name? I forget her name.
Come over here, come to the box.
Did you come where?
No. No, goodnight.
Cool kids and news media only in the box, I'm afraid.
No, 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 Sofia, Casello.
Oh Curtis, come over here, come sit with me.
God damn it.
If it's only cool people, why is Adam there?
Oh, this is my wife Sofia.
Ladies and gentlemen, wrap it up, get off your phones, we're gonna get started here shortly. We do have a decent crowd in here. I don't, I don't even barely see any police officers, if any police officers, and I would hope that they'd come to this.
I'm an officer, but I'm off duty.
Oh, hello, hello Nova, oh wait, you're on a date?
Yeah, I'm on a date. This is so romantic.
No, this is fine, just don't make it awkward for people, okay?
It's already awkward.
You're making it worse.
Yeah, shut up!
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm gonna pretty much do exactly what I did last night. Thomas, whatever the hell you wanna call me, I'm Allison, hello. Uh, I wanna thank you all for coming here today, uh, for this town hall. We did go over a number of things last night and this morning and this is gonna be our last one before uh, some things get taken care of within the city. But, as I started last night and I wanted to start again today, I wanna take a few minutes and just discuss everything that's changing within this city. And I wanna go over, um, the fact that we're all wearing a specific color, alright, and that color is a very, very beautiful shade of pink. And to show that our love and support is always for everybody in this community, I wanted to tell Mr. Lang Buddha again, that we are all thinking about him and his family as of this time and we're all wearing this color for him. And we always wanna say, you know, fuck cancer. So, uh, I just wanna get that out there for everybody.
Amen to that, fuck cancer.
Absolutely, so I just wanna get that out there, you know, we are still thinking about ya, alright? Um, I'm gonna keep going with this and we're gonna go over the four laws that were voted on in the town hall last time. And uh, I did wanna mention that all four of these laws are and will be passed and put into our penal code. I'm gonna go over each one of them, um, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about them, but one of them is for an act of torture. Uh, it's the inhumane act of intentionally causing suffering or serious injury to a person or person's mental health. This can be done in order to force the person to do or say something against their own will. That has been voted on by the city, it has been passed and will be put into our penal code. We have uh, an animal cruelty rework, that law has been reworked into a misdemeanor charge and a felony charge. And there is a little bit of a difference between the two. Misdemeanor charge can and will impact people who own pets. And the felony charge can and will impact people who are recklessly endangering and ending the lives of animals for no reason. That was asked for by the park rangers, it was voted on by the city and it will be a law and it will be going into our MDW and penal code. The last law that we're going to be talking about is having a possession of ketamine. Ketamine has been uh, made illegal. Uh, it's a felony possession and a misdemeanor possession of the controlled dangerous substance ketamine. That has uh, is passed and it was voted on by the city and it will be put into our penal code later today. Now, at this time, I know that that was a little bit quick, but I do wanna have, open the floor to see if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns regarding these laws, because they have all passed and will be part of your day to day now, okay? If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, please go ahead and raise your hand right now. I didn't say end the world, but you know, just raise your hand lightly. Uh, okay, since no one has.
Sorry, question from the press box?
Yes.
Were there four laws or three? I feel like you've only mentioned three.
It's four, if you think about it. Um, animal cruelty was a single charge, now it's a misdemeanor and a felony, making it two separate different laws.
Gotcha, alright, yeah, okay, no questions for me.
No worries. Now, here is the big one ladies and gentlemen, it caused quite a stir last night. The police department has asked the justices, the DOJ, to put the law of loitering back on the docket for the citizens to vote. They are uh, they are once again bringing the law of loitering up, they would like to have it re-added to the penal code. Now, I don't know if anybody remembers what loitering was, but essentially, it is the right of the police officers at that time to deem somebody who is loitering, um, a, a fine and time, so they are removed from a situation and I can read what our old loitering law used to be. Um, if anybody uh, knows exactly what it was, um, or how it has been, it was removed after going to a public vote. Now, with that being said, I wanna open up the floor to this one, because this was a big debate last night. People were not happy and uh, there weren't very many positives to reintroducing loitering law. Now, I wanna ask you as the general public, does anybody know what loitering is? I'm sorry, what was that ma'am, you're very quiet?
Uh, we don't have that in Colombia, what is loitering?
Well, loitering is essentially where you're standing or waiting idly with no apparent purpose. You are literally just standing there because you can, not doing anything that's useful.
That's called living a life, no?
Well, depending, I mean, this is you just standing there causing issues and actions for ongoing scenarios.
Chat, did I miss anything good?
Around you with no purpose.
Did I miss anything good?
Essentially what the police would like to bring back as a law. So uh, if any of you have any comments or concerns, I wanna hear about them, I really do, because a lot of people were not happy about bringing this back last night.
Um, can you, can you um?
This will be used to target journalists who are doing our job.
No, you're doing a job, that's, that's not. An apparent, that is an apparent purpose.
Hey, what, what were you talking about? I just got back.
Uh, loitering, the police wanna bring loitering back.
Please bring loitering back so you get that fucking cesspool at the apartments gone.
Well, that's kinda what they want.
Please!
That is the point of loitering, um, the police officers would.
Police are gonna prove that they're loitering though, they could, they could literally be there for a reason.
So, so where's? Well, okay, so here, here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this. The, the, there's two main points that I'd like to address with this.
Chat, back in the day. Chat, back in the day, Legion Square was the hub. The cops used to give people fifty thousand dollar tickets for loitering at Legion Square.
Us and me are here for, because we, you can take that to a bench trial, you can take that to an appeal. You can, you can do what, exactly, you can do whatever you want with that. It's not something that's just gonna be thrown around willy-nilly. The police officers know when and where to use that, but I'm hoping that they do.
I mean, I, I mean Abdul, you know, we could go like, Abdul, you remember go like real old school in Legion Square when the cops used to give fifty thousand dollar loitering tickets? I mean, we could, you go that way too, you know?
Yeah, but, but, but this, this, that's why, you know, she's saying, you know, with the police right now, they could have the responsibility, you know? They are well-trained and they could maybe do it.
I'm a hundred percent on board for that law.
Well, so here's the thing, Bench Guy was actually here last night. He is afraid that the police are gonna go to him when he's sitting on his bench, you know? Conversating or having his deep thoughts that he does. He's afraid that the police are gonna abuse it and they're gonna give him those, a loitering ticket. And, and that can be a valid concern, but we also had Chief Police Sam Bass here, who spoke on the fact that.
Chat, if you guys know me, I hate the apartments, that's why.
That's what he does.
If you guys know me, I hate the fucking apartments, so.
Yeah, bro, they'll fucking say you're loitering, then they'll try to search you, they'll know you have a fucking weapon on you, then they'll, fuck that.
Loitering is an infraction only, it's not a crime, so there's no detention or search, and here's the thing. When it comes to being issued an infraction, you can challenge those, you do not need to file on the docket, you do not need to do anything. Because, look at it this way, I, I doubt anyone here, and maybe there are a few exceptions, so forgive me, but I doubt anyone really cares if they've got on their record a loitering charge. But, people are gonna care about the principle of it and the financial impact, the two hundred and fifty dollars. So, if you believe someone has wrongfully cost you two hundred and fifty dollars, guess what? Small claims court, you don't need to file. You just call up a judge and say, hey, I wanna do small claims court, the judge says, okay, I've done a few of them in the last week alone. So if people start using that more, then that would be a remedy to things that y'all don't wanna put on the docket, so I would suggest that to be your remedy.
Yeah, I've, I've myself had multiple people bring in a bench trial for loitering and additional charges and I've thrown that out every time, because the police were like, eh, I just didn't want them to be there. And there's multiple valid reasons why that charge can be pushed and, and if the police aren't using it properly, that's what we are here for, okay guys? Um, and I, and so what, what's gonna happen is that's gonna go back up on the voting docket tomorrow, it's gonna go for a full week. You guys can vote on it whether or not you actually wanna bring it back and inducted it back in the penal code. And obviously, this is something up here, it is, it is literally, if you don't want it, it doesn't have to happen, you have to vote, alright? Uh, yes, Mr. White Jacket Red Shirt?
Uh, so what about like, the farmer's market? What if you just wanna hang out at like, the farmer's markets?
Shopping is a purpose.
Well, I want a little more context to that, you're usually hang out, okay?
People just like to walk up and down the Dean World Pier sometimes to just see what's going on?
So if they're visiting shops and, no, it would not be considered loitering, they're visiting shops. Loitering in a sense of being at one of those markets includes you just standing there and a police officer has an active scene and you're uh, being an onlooker, causing additional threat or harm to them, that's where that comes in, okay?
Loitering would be if you stood next to a specific vendor without intention of purchasing anything, continuously bothering them.
Why is Murphy on his judge character?
Got it.
May I uh, interject, Your Honor?
Yes, Ms. Nova, oh, right ahead.
So, uh, as an example, the reason why.
Why is he on this fucking judge character?
A loitering charge is because, as an example, at the apartments, we may get.
Chat, they got him.
Space of an hour.
Chat, they got him, bro. They got him dude, they converted him.
Who are generally at the apartments, that is when, uh, call after call, we would then, or I would personally consider issuing a loitering charge. If the people.
Murphy's it up!
Please leave the area as it was ongoing crime that kept happening at the apartments. I hope that adds some context to at least how I would perceive it. Um, obviously, I do not speak for every single officer. I hope that makes sense.
I, I think it does, I think it does. Um, with the jacket on, uh, gentleman with no shirt on in the middle of City Hall.
Yeah, I was wondering, so let's say hypothetically, you get charged, you get accused of loitering from a police officer, does that give them consent to then search you?
Motherfucker, you just said not. The judge already said that.
No, it does not. Loitering is an infraction, it's not a misdemeanor or felony, it's literally just, think of it as like a speeding ticket. Right, you're doing ten miles over, does that give the police officer a right to search your truck?
You say that you're not loitering, but they say that you are, and then it turns into disobeying a police officer, which turns into detainment, which turns into a search.
Understood, this is.
That has happened before.
This is, this is very important. Everyone needs to understand this, look. Your remedy, when a police officer conducts illegal detention, is never to take matters into your own hands. If you do so, you are effectively costing yourself the ability to fight the case. I'm around four, I'm around forty hours a week, sir.
I am around any time that I'm needed to be Curtis, you know this.
Craft five with a baby.
I trust you guys, man, I trust you.
I think there's a lot of people in here that can tell you that I've been around for forty hours a week since I got locked in.
Criminals get fucked left, right, center by cops, man, you think we wanna fucking deal with shit that way?
No, I, I, I get it. No, 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 I get it, I get where it's been heated before and in the past, things have escalated to a point where it's like, why was this in the first place? No, I get it, I get it, I do. And, and that's one of those things is, if you don't want this to happen, vote. It's as simple as that.
I think I understand the question.
Yeah, it's going into a poll, yeah.
The question is very relevant, because loitering is a charge which also comes with a command. So a lawful order is issued in the issuance of this infraction, which depending on the circumstances can lead to complicated, uh, more serious situations. So it's a very valid one.
Yo, golf guy taking it for four months, wolf taking it for five months dude.
Alright, so I know what the fucking happened. I'm not speaking just because I, you know, I've experienced it. Not just speaking to hear myself fucking talk, you know?
No, no, you have, everybody in this room has a valid point and it's a valid concern, it's either you know, something that you've dealt with in your history, or it's something that you've noticed other people have dealt with and it's, it's a repetition you don't want to necessarily happen. Wait, I get you, a hundred percent do. That's why this is going to be that public vote. I don't wanna force anything on anybody that's gonna cause such issue, that's why this is an entire voting standard now. Uh, yes, Mr., still not wearing a shirt.
Yo, chat, we're so close to two hundred and fifty seven thousand followers, man, if you're new to the channel, slap that follow button dudes. Slap the follow button chat, let's get up there!
Uh, from what I've gathered, the police many wants it because of, you know, people loitering around the apartments. So couldn't this law be reinstated with the limitation of, if they are only taking effect around apartments or other public areas like that? Let's say for example, outside of City Hall, outside of apartments, outside of, I don't know.
There we go, keep going, keep going chat.
Cover the entire city and state of Andre.
No thanks, fuck.
Because what happens when one area suddenly gets moved to another area and then we have to go and rewrite the law? Or this other, you know, it can go from certain, like, a, a long time ago, we used to have multiple different areas.
Get a Lambo, true.
And uh, they'd go out of their apartment and then they'd be done for the day and they'd just go and take care of things, and obviously, we don't have that right now. So, if, if we just keep it to one place and five minutes later, everybody else is somewhere else, it's, it's not gonna happen, so this is gonna cover the entire city and state.
What if it's limited to like a highly congested zones or areas and you just have a list of said areas?
So the point I just made of if everybody moved two steps to the left and it's no longer covered by the law, then I have to rewrite the law, does, does that, did I get, you got that?
Alright, I, I get you, alright.
Yeah. I cannot make, can I say something?
Hmm.
I believe that the problem.
Sarah! Sarah, thank you for the five gifted. Chat, show Sarah some love for those five giftees.
City Hall, I wanna go for the walk over there in the, in El Pancho or something and just get a little bit of vitamin D. I should be allowed to, but the problem is that my fear is that a lot of cops that like to be.
Why don't I do crime anymore because of the bench? Yes, exactly. If I get caught, the boys will never do another vault, so if that's what you want, I'll do it.
Can I, can I interrupt for just one second? Let's do this.
Yo, call me, thank you for the gifted sub dude.
Constructive, we're not gonna do this in a negative light whatsoever. And, and, and I'm gonna keep it constructive by saying.
Tea stuff with the five, guys, relax!
If you have these valid concerns, you know what you should vote, okay? I'm not gonna keep going negative.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna bring up Wayne's case, that'll cause, no.
I don't think we should follow that train of thought at all whatsoever. It's a simple yes or no vote at this point. And if you yourself feel that you do not want this law, because you feel like an officer is going to use it in a specific light, that could be a conversation.
What would happen if they found the bench, they can't see, well the,
Right now, we're gonna.
You, you have the RP that they can see everything on the bench, so they would take the bench from me and then everybody will be fucked.
Has a valid concern, we'll just go ahead and.
Yo, pencil vesta with the brand new prime, thank you dude, guys, you guys are going nuts.
Concern from the press box is that it will be used to move journalists on from scenes with the, oh, you can appeal it later, denying us the ability to actually gather the story in the first place, that's my chief concern with this and the, the issue that I have mainly with the, I have no issues with the police, but given that it's like getting blood out of a stone already trying to get a quote from this department, if you take away my ability to take notes at a scene, I can't do my job anymore.
So.
Can I address that one, Allison? Uh, let's, let's do this. Nova, as uh, the police presence here, even though you were on a date, go ahead and answer it.
So, my only question to this individual is, is if there's been an active shootout, sir, and there are things that could still be actively going on within the scene, do you think it would be safe for us to allow you to stay there and, and document the area or do whatsoever, or would you rather just prefer to do our job and protect your life?
Chat, I can tell you right now, some cops will be petty as fuck and abuse that loitering charge. I could, I could promise you, they'll probably have good RP reasons for it, but they'll be petty as fuck, bro.
That time, I'll let it calm down, I am a proper journalist and not a clickbaiter.
Alright, sir, I think I can handle this, I think I can handle this. Sir, you have constitutionally protected freedom of the press. Law enforcement's job is to provide a measure of safety by declaring the area a crime scene and providing access to all but investigators. So you can stand at a distance, whatever distance is declared is safe and you can do your journalistic pursuits uh, freely within the law, because.
I'm gonna get on Minio, uh, people fishing, sorry, loitering.
Former director of ESPN.
I'm gonna go do, I'm gonna do Ranger shit, listen guys, sorry, use a loitering up here, you're getting a ticket. Continue to fish though, it's fine.
Take your judgment of the police vote of use it, just my concern is that it, it, it is vague enough that it may be.
But it's okay, continue to fish.
I, I get ya, I, I hundred percent do, I don't think you'll have that problem, I really don't.
Come back in twenty minutes, give him another true.
Okay, um, before we wrap this up, uh, because we're gonna pass this over to the mayor's office next. Uh, is there any other questions that you guys have?
Yo guys, thanks for all the love, Ben. Thanks for all the resub subs, I appreciate y'all.
Yeah, one, one thing I just wanna raise, um, under Sheriff Rose.
Oh boy, thank you for the ten dude.
The main reason.
Oh boy, thank you.
Department is looking to reintroduce this charge is public safety. About ninety-eight percent of all hostages are taken from Altus Street Apartments and like Deputy Nova has already said, there are a lot of shootouts that just happen there, because a lot of people loiter and congregate. It's not to try getting you guys with just petty citations to escalate the things. Um, it, it is a genuine concern for public safety.
Okay.
Uh, who do we talk to about these fucking asset fees?
That's gonna be the mayor's office and actually, mayor's office, it's your turn.
Ah, get the fuck up Abdulie!
Aight, aight, what the, what, asset fees again, come on, hate me, what's up with the asset fees?
I'm tired of paying sixty fucking thousand dollars in asset fees, you cocksucker, every fucking two weeks.
You're not fucked living, you're not living right, Habibi, sell the fucking car.
Motherfucker, I shouldn't have to pay sixty fucking grand and. I ain't fucking broke bitch, it's fucking dumb as fuck, I'm paying sixty fucking grand in asset fees.
I mean, if you own a car that owns that, that costs that much, bro, that, that's, that should be nothing to you.
It, it's not the, it's not the point Abdul, I pay for my cars in full and then I still gotta pay for them, it's fucking a headache.
Of course, but you know, like, like, it's, it's designed, so, let me tell you guys what are asset fees. Well, only for you ma'am, but uh. Now, you, you, you look pretty sitting down there, you stay there, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So basically, what you're telling the fucking, the, the residents of Los Santos is, go fuck yourself, you can't own a car, you can't own an apartment or a house, because we're just gonna keep fucking you and taking your money, is that what you're basically telling the people?
Not really, I'm kidding the people that.
A hundred percent, that's what you're telling them.
Now, 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 let me tell you guys, okay, now this is not just directed at Vinnie. Um, especially you Vinnie, you should know, long time ago, people owned cars and they owned like a fucking full garage of cars, ten cars, all of them is like two of two, three of three, one of a, one of a kind. You know, they were hoarding them, hoarding them, I'm telling you.
Yes, I remember that.
And they wanted to let them go.
Yes.
This motherfucker was one of them, right here.
Bitch, no I wasn't, what the fuck?
He's crying the loudest right now, that's why he's crying the loudest.
Ruin everything for us.
Fuck, Abdul, stop exposing me!
Okay, now let me tell you guys, you know, that this is designed so you only get to extend your leg as much as your blanket can give you. You know, do not overspend, do not overreach. Go up slowly, you know, one day, if you want to buy a million dollar car, make sure you be able to afford it in the, after that. If you cannot, sell the car so it would go back to the people. That's what I gotta say. Thank you.
Sixty K is unreasonable, Mr. Abdul, because that means six months later, you paid another one million dollars.
Car!
Which one?
The one that you paid sixty K for.
Exactly, uh, two point eight million.
Around a million? Should be more than a million, Vinnie.
Two point eight million, he said.
What happened?
Two point eight million!
Yeah.
There you go, man. Two point eight million, honestly, sixty K should be nothing.
Give us more time then, man.
Thank you.
I mean, I mean, okay, what?
What happened to the, um, what happened to the asset fees when we pay them once a month?
Yes.
At least revert it back to that, you know?
Alright, uh, any questions?
Yeah, he just fucking had a question, Abdul.
Oh, what's up?
He said, what about the asset fees?
Yeah, when we used to pay it for once, once, one time a month? Can we not revert it back to, uh, to that system?
No, we couldn't revert it to once a month, honestly, to, um, you know, two weeks is good, you know? Because one month could be too long for some people. Some people will uh, take three months to pay for their asset fees and if they take three months for, for them to pay their asset fees, that is property that we will not be seeing for three months.
Okay.
You see what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
But that's it, you know, think about it rationally, you guys, that's all, that's all I ask.
Dooley, what about if the asset fees are every two weeks, but maybe at a lower cost? Because listen, at the end of the day, I'm not trying to be a dick, but there's a lot of people in the city that thrive for their first car and they, they spent fifty grand in their first car, like they'd been dying for it or buying a house. Like, what about lowering the asset fees for people? Like, for me, I don't give a fuck, I, you know, I don't care personally.
Fee for a fifty grand car, Vinnie?
It's eight, it's eight hundred, I have one.
There, eight hundred a week, eight hundred is nothing.
Yeah, but you're basically taxing people already, like, that they already been taxed already for their vehicle or their home, like.
The reason they're getting taxed is basically so we can, you know, the state can have the car back if the person, for example, uh, travels and never comes back.
Hmm.
You see what I mean?
And you gotta see it from the other point of view, so Vinnie, you gotta, people that wanna buy expensive vehicles must have, you know, the money in their bank to, to be able to run it.
Yo, charge Benji more for fucking asset fees, please.
I'm back there, Stacy, Stacy, any questions?
Yeah, I do actually, so here's the thing with the asset fees, is that people are so focused on paying those that they don't do anything else in the city. They won't be able to afford like any.
Honestly.
Then again, you're gonna make sure to have a steady income to be able to pay those asset fees, right?
All I'm gonna say is, you guys, you guys, if you feel like you are spending your entire two weeks just making money to pay for your asset fees.
No pixel MMO, what's going on boys?
Sell that property, because you cannot afford it.
No pixel MMO, what's up boys?
You cannot afford it, the tip is there. Reality, I'm sorry, but reality will hit you sometimes, if you cannot afford the car, sell it!
If no one can afford it, then who's gonna buy it?
People that can afford it. There's plenty of people in the city that can, that can afford it already.
Cars of you, this guy, you know, he's an expert in harmony, right there. What, what's up?
That's interesting, I work at PDM and no one's buying cars, so I'm curious.
Is there, is there anything else about asset fees?
Abdul, Abdul, Abdul.
I wonder why nobody's buying cars.
Let me paint the picture, right? Imagine somebody that works.
Abdul, somebody's talking to you!
What's up? You're all fucking talking to, where is it? How, what's up?
Right there.
Alright, let me paint the fucking picture, right? Imagine somebody works at fucking Burger Shop, fucking Rooster's Rest, fucking, a taxi driver, right? A simple person, a simple, a simple woman, a simple man who has a dream. They want to own a nice car, they want to live in their own house, they don't want to live in the apartments, hearing people fucking making noises on top, bureau, on the side. They want to have a nice car, they don't wanna drive a piece of shit two thousand dollar car, they wanna afford something that's a bit more costly. Let's say that person has lived an honest life, their entire fucking life in Los Santos, never committed a crime. They get their shitty paycheck of like a thousand dollars every one hour or so, they've worked their fucking asshole for six fucking months, they can finally afford that nice shiny car, that's cost like say, three hundred thousand doors, four hundred thousand doors, because they've saved up the money. They've spent their life saving up the money.
Chat, watch this one chat.
Now they can't even fucking enjoy it, why? Because they can't pay the asset fees. And what do you say? Sell the car, sell the house, so you're telling them, they have to sell their dream.
Chat, watch this one, you wanna see an uproar?
How does that make sense?
Hold up! Now, I wanna answer this, okay? I wanna answer this.
Watch, I started the pot.
So.
Watch, I started the pot, chat.
A civilian who is working, where, where did you say he's working?
He's just giving examples of like.
He said Burger Shot and Rooster. He said Burger Shot and Rooster, okay? If you're a civilian who's working. Yes, a taxi driver, okay? For example, I'm a taxi driver. I still just.
Chat, before I ask the question.
Honestly, you don't see me crying about it, do you?
Do cops pay asset fees on their personally owned CVPIs?
Do you?
You play at the ten K table at the casino, I've seen you.
Exactly. There you go. I play at the ten K table at the casino and I'm still driving my taxi. Oh, I have money, man. I have money.
Hey, miss, wait, Miss Abdul, I have a serious question.
What's up?
Okay, I don't wanna be a dick, but we pay all these asset fees, correct?
Right?
Do police, did a police department pay asset fees on their personally owned CVPIs?
Oh, yes, of course.
Excuse me, excuse me. Outside, outside, look, I'm.
Do they?
They do.
No, they don't.
Wait, what?
No, we don't.
Ah, so how is this fair to us, Abdul? How is this fair to the citizens of fucking Los Santos? That the fucking cops don't pay asset fees on their CVPIs?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, bring it back, please.
I'm such a fucking asshole.
You're not gonna shoot.
I'm such a fucking, and what kind of mayor do we have that didn't even know that?
Shut up, Vinnie.
It's time to expose.
Alright, listen, hi everyone, I'm Ursula Lichtenberg, Deputy Mayor. Um, also, uh, I do wanna introduce the rest of the staff because we didn't really have a chance, cause we got right into the asset fee discussion.
I'm such an asshole.
Um, uh, our, behind me is Salom Yellow, one of the other deputy mayors. Um, we also have Sherry Pie and the.
Hot, I'm just doing the fucking stir the pot, hot it.
At any time throughout the day, we are, there's usually a deputy mayor or the mayor around. It is very rare you will see a time that one of us is not around and available to help you and whatnot. So I do wanna point that out. We'll get back to the asset fee discussion in just a second. I did have some just prepared comments I wanna give, uh, real fast and, um, have Salom talk for a second. Alright, okay, thank you very much. Um, so on behalf of the mayor's office, I want honestly to thank every single one of you for attending this town hall. I know this takes a lot out of your day and I am actually really enthusiastic and happy to see that all of you are so passionate about city issues. Um, to start, I wanna extend our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Oswald Tinkerman.
They're deflecting, chat. They're literally fucking deflecting right now. What is this shit?
On his unfortunate passing yesterday. He was actually a very good friend of mine and I'm very sad about his passing. He's gonna be fondly remembered as one of the greatest musicians of Los Santos, so I'm really gonna miss him. And I am. You didn't know?
What?
I'm confused.
One of our, one of our Wu Chang artists, uh, died.
Yeah, we could talk about that later. Outside of it, there is an article on an app and everything. I'm very sorry about that.
I think they're deflecting though with these asset fees for cops CVPIs.
I think so too, Vinnie.
We will get, we will get back to this, please. Um, our office is halfway through its term and in the past month, we have worked hard to serve the people of Los Santos. Since we started office and reopened the business proposals, we have, we have reviewed more than sixty business proposals. Giving actual feedback to those who have been denied, so that way they can improve and hopefully resubmit their ideas and their creativity back to our office in hopes of getting approval. We've listened to your concerns regarding the, um, vendor market costs and as a measure of relief, we have both lowered the cost of vendor licenses. And increased the price of each farmer's market booth ticket. Uh, I think everyone has noticed there's been an uptick in boost being at the farmer's market and Dean World. We have, um, also updated the farmer's market operating rules and guidelines to ensure that only one person needs to have a vendor's license, the one who claims it. We also have provided a monthly option which grants a forty percent discount on cost as well as helping the vendors, so they do not need to constantly come back to City Hall to renew. In addition, you will notice that we have updated the marketing, um, farmer's market rules and operating guidelines as well. So please review them as they have changed just slightly.
Oswald, uh, uh, there's a lot of crazy shit going, there, there you go.
I'm not sure who did this.
Um, Oswald Permetus character, there was some, there's a lot of crazy shit going on. I don't know exactly what though. See, it's not, they give it a five, guys, thanks for all the love, man.
Uh, yes, I can, uh, I can answer that. So basically, the previous, uh, rule stated that you can only sell weed, uh, food and drinks. We basically just changed that, so there's, there isn't any illegal.
Oh, Chad, trust me, I'm not gonna let this go, Chad, trust me.
So, you know, this includes blushies.
Alcohol though. I feel like that would already fall into those guidelines and why would this not be brought up in DOJ announcements or anything of the sort? Like, why is there no notification of these changes?
Farmer's Market rules and guidelines are controlled in this case by the mayor's office rather than the DOJ and they are not considered, um, like penal code laws.
Are we getting charged for, uh, selling some, something that isn't allowed? Yeah, and it's literally part of our legislation. Thank you.
Alright, we will, we will talk with the DOJ on this matter and see what we can come up with. Thank you very much for bringing that to us.
So can we get things not changed without any notification of the public or vote on legislation?
We did notify the public. This is not brand new. We did notify multiple times over the past month.
Uh, could I ask where?
Uh, LSBN app, multiple twats. I released news, press releases to both Weasel and LSBN.
Yeah, that was two weeks ago.
So where?
And announced at town hall.
Where was it mentioned that, uh, the alcohol's part was changed, not just the changes to the? True.
So.
Casual city dwellers. Branded news app, can we not use that for official legislation changes?
Uh.
Not everyone has good tickets.
Guys, how long is this meeting gonna be?
Okay, so I, I can, just a second, give me a second.
Curtis, shut up.
Same.
I, I, I think, I think maybe like, heads up to the mayor's office if like, you do shit like that, maybe, cause like, some, certain people can't get into the city as often as others. Maybe make a, you know, general announcement that everybody could see it next time, so this doesn't happen.
What type of announcement are you talking about, Vinnie?
Like whatever changes are made, put it in fucking, you know, the Discordian, like the main Discordian, like, wouldn't that be logical? Like, so people could see it?
Talking about DOJ, uh, announcement, DOJ announcement.
They, they are separate from the mayor's office, but thank you for actually.
Well, obviously, maybe this is a thing that you, maybe we could get something in the sense of mayor announcements, mayor office announcements and people could see this shit, so this doesn't happen.
I would love to have that. We don't have that currently.
Alright, let's get back to the, let's get back to the, let's get back to these asset fees, huh? Let's get back to these.
Listen, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make us pay asset fees, everyone in the city must be paying.
I wanna know why the mayor himself didn't know the cops are not paying fucking asset fees on their personally owned vehicles.
How is it that we pay for our own cruiser instead of the, you know?
We pay for our own cars.
We pay for our own cars.
Yeah, but we.
No more asset fees.
What is the difference?
We work for the city, like.
Everybody.
A lot of people, city jobs.
Hold up, hold up, everybody, hold up, hold up.
Holding up, holding up.
And I still pay my asset fees, which is.
Hey, there you go.
You tell him, man, you tell her.
Yeah, I get to the bottom of this, I promise you, everybody. I get to the bottom of this.
No more asset fees, one more term for Abdul.
Stacy's arm.
You know, my arm is gonna fall off. Hey, everyone, please, quiet.
My arm has been up for twenty minutes.
Oh, really?
Same here.
Listen, there are a lot of people with questions. I guess we're not even, uh, Salom, do you wanna finish your part of the, the prepared speech that apparently we're not gonna be allowed to give? Or?
Oh, God.
Give your speech, let somebody speak. I will kick his ass like a donkey.
By the way, the changes literally weren't mentioned in the LSBN article.
Still deflecting.
Uh, Vinnie, shut up. Glad it's football Sunday. Anybody else glad it's football Sunday?
No, I'm not glad it's football Sunday. Enjoy football Sunday.
Hey, I'm back on topic here.
Okay, get away from there. Salom, do you wanna continue?
So, uh, along with these accomplishments, we have worked with many departments on their budgets and needs to help give them a good coverage around the state. We are also working on a bonus system for attorneys. We will continue to help each division in the public sector where we can. Finally, we want to remind each of you that your feedback is welcome. We are always open to listen to any concerns or complaints regarding any government, employee or department. Even outside the, this town hall.
Chat, give me a second, I'll be right back.
Our numbers are, uh, in the Department of Justice application and the mayor's office is always open should any of you need to speak to us. As an, as an administration, we have exceeded our own expectations and will continue to serve the citizens of Los Santos to our best extent, extent. Thank you.
Okay, can I ask one question now?
Yes, Sophia, you can ask a question now.
Okay, this is, uh, regarding the asset fees and, uh, like Vinnie said.
This motherfucker just said he exceeded his expectations, the fuck?
Uh, the point that I think is coming across to me very strongly is that to me it just seems a little unrealistic because, for example, sixty K. Two times a month is a hundred and twenty K. By the end of the year, you paid almost, what, three point five million dollars? Or no, almost four million dollars for that vehicle in total. And I don't think it should be realistic that anyone should have to pay four million dollars to own a vehicle in the city for a year. Like I own, uh, uh, what some would consider a very, very high-end vehicle outside of the city and my, uh, you know, vehicle taxes at the end of the year are nowhere near anything. Like fucking a million dollars, you know? So I do think that the asset fees at the moment are incredibly, incredibly high and just not realistic at all.
Alright, look, I wanna say something. In, in reference to asset fees, the system implements the idea and it's predicated on the idea that we don't fully seize vehicles. So what you need to understand is that if you're gonna argue for the idea that asset fees are lowered. Then you're going to incur the counterbalancing response from the federal government that, okay, we'll reinstitute seizing vehicles entirely then, which I don't think anyone here wants.
What was the flex? What was the flex, chat? I wasn't here, my bed.
I pay my taxes and my bills, so if other people don't, that's their problem. For those of us that pay our taxes and pay our asset fees, I don't care if somebody else doesn't pay theirs and they get their shit repossessed, like. It's just too much, even to be able to afford like a house, a reasonably priced house, which there aren't any in the city anymore. Unless you go to the south side, but then you have to get permission in the south side. It's like, if I wanna afford a house and a regular car and I'm here every day, I'm paying like fifty or sixty K in asset fees.
You're actually a maniac.
That's insane. Fucking idiot. It's insane.
Madness. Alright, I wanna.
Wait, hold on, you're paying sixty K in asset fees? I own a home that was, that cost me after I saved up. I think the price was around seven hundred thousand. I pay seventeen K every two weeks, so that's around eight and a half K a week. If you're paying sixty K in asset fees, then your assets are totaling north of, I would guess, three, four million? And if, if we're gonna go off the assumption that that is going to be somehow the standard individual living in this city. Uh, then there, maybe there's other problems that need to be looked at larger than the asset fees, which is how are people making that income? So if y'all really wanna go down that road, be my guest.
Ah, no, you guys don't want that, believe me.
Alright, the one thing I wanna assure you guys, like you, I know that there's a lot of anger today, a lot of venting and frustrations. I wanna make this one thing clear. We are also citizens of Los Santos. We are on your side. We are trying to work our hardest to try to help you as much as we can. Some things are a little out of our control, but we are looking at options to try to help relieve all the economic stress that there is. I just wanna make that very clear. Do not think this is an you versus us kind of thing. We are trying to work with you because we feel the exact same way in many ways that you do. And there are frustrations on our side too, that we are dealing with, that we can't necessarily talk about, but things that we would love to see change.
Hmm, nah, sure about that. Hey, all you motherfuckers arresting people for marijuana seeds. I got this whole legislation, all laws changed up. Now I'm here, people in a fucking jail for the ninth, for a fucking seed? How am I ever busy selling seeds? You lock up people for buying seeds?
Yeah!
That is the matter for the DOJ.
Yep, that's, that's ours.
That's the matter for you.
And what about Wayne's case?
Why am I with this fucking senate now, huh?
Pretty sure Wayne, I would, uh, stop talking if I were a head.
Cheaper body armor.
Stop talking or what? What, you fucking checking me now?
Wait, 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 why, why should, wait, 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 why should Wayne stop talking that the fact that he, he was, he was found, wait, wait, wait.
Fuck you, Abdulie. Fuck you, Abdulie, what's my fucking business, huh?
Everybody, everybody, hold on, everybody, hold on.
I'm gonna say something, Abdul. Wayne, you still have a case with the senate on the docket. I would not do anything to incriminate yourself.
How the fuck am I incriminating myself? I wanna know how you people are arresting people for seeds. I wanna know.
I don't arrest anybody. That's gonna be the police department. That conversation isn't even.
Well, doesn't it stem from the DOJ?
What?
Enforcing the laws?
Is there anything that I have ever written about seeds in the legislation or penal code?
I don't know, you tell me.
Absolutely not.
So why the fuck are they arresting people for it?
I asked the police.
No law for it.
So basically, the, the cops could be corrupt and it's fine by doing illegal shit.
The one that holds the police responsible, so shouldn't you have something to do with it?
And they are pressing charges in current situations. We do have the reason we have, uh, all of court. Yes, we do, but there is not one thing and they're about seeds, is there?
His seeds are legal. You allowed to have seeds on your person, as many as you want. And now I hear you guys are raiding people over having seeds behind them?
Wait, wait, wait.
Again, that's not our conversation.
But obviously it is because you're signing off on these warrants if they're getting raided. What the fuck?
Not just the, when we have a raid warrant or when we have a warrant brought to us, it is not for a goddamn seed, Vinnie.
I guess Wayne's lying then.
Nah, I'm not fucking lying, B man. So I go and Terranova tell me why I go on. I just, obviously just talked to him in the fucking Brooklyn Brook.
Wait, this is, okay, so the, the Cap Terranova case is public record. If you wanna go on the docket and look at the police report and adjust your expectations and your knowledge base, you can do so. But I can assure you that your representation of the facts is woefully misguided.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Tell them again. Wayne, did you get?
Uh, Stacy, can I take a question for you?
Oh my god, whoa, Stacy, really? Holy shit. Yo, what about, hey, hear me out. No, 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 no. Okay, hear me out. What if? What if your first property and your, or you choose one car, one property and then you don't have to pay asset fees for that and then everything else, you pay asset fees for that? What if?
Love that, love that.
That could be interesting. That is something we, we will definitely look at and consider. Thank you.
Good job.
Wow, yay, awesome.
Hey, you know what? That's the first time that someone actually came up with a solution for a problem, so good on you.
Wait, what did she say?
It's actually a very good idea.
Yeah, that's a really good idea, holy shit.
I, um, that was one of his campaign look-arts. Keep in mind, again, things take time in this city. I know a lot of you, uh, hope to have everything taken care of overnight. Discussions do take a while. And there are a lot of factors that you may not be aware of that we have to work through as an administration in order to affect any kind of change in this city. So please keep that in mind. Um, we are doing our best here and I do agree that that is a great idea, Stacy, so if.
I'm just saying, if you guys would be telling people that like you have a solution in the, in the making right now and whatever, and that's a possibility in the future, I feel like there's, there wouldn't be as much anger.
And we have said that at, unfortunately, everything kinda got cut off by a lot of different things earlier. We do have solutions we are working through right now, yes. There are concepts that we are trying to propose. There are things that we are trying to work through, yes.
Also, I would like to add one thing.
Yes.
I just want to tell everyone that the asset fees are outside of the mayor's, uh, office hand. But we, uh, we do have the power to suggest changes and that's what we are trying to work on right now.
Alright, gentleman with the jacket blue.
Uh, one thing, say like I buy a house, right?
Jiggy di jiggy di.
And I wanna sell it to my friend. Is there any way we can, you know, implement something where I can sell it to my friends instead of selling it back to the state?
Very similar issue in this regards. Um, and we would love to, uh, be able to work on that. There is things that we are looking at right now. To see if we can get around some of these issues, but right now, as of right now, there is no way around that. Uh, but you Meg?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, I would like to say, is there any like, uh. Possibility that, you know, there could be like some real estate people like back in the day.
Well, it should be like a week.
That Pata said, you know? About, you know, where we could be able to sell, you know, our houses or, you know, our properties to people or sell it back to the state at full price or to a real estate agent.
Yeah, that is something we are actually proposing right now and we are looking into seeing if we can get that finally reset back into the city. So I do agree, that is a great idea and something that we really want to see as well as an administration.
Okay, sweet. And, uh, you know, I recommend someone called Rose. She's a great, she was a great real estate person back in the day.
Thank you. Alright, Chase?
Yeah, so before you said about, obviously, it is something that's not gonna be able to be in the mayor's hands, that they're not gonna be able to control. So at that point, what's the point of the mayor?
Is Ash gonna get mad? You're on my lap.
We can affect changes by making suggestions and whatnot. Obviously, we can see a lot of anger in this room. And when we bring these, uh, options and changes up, we can definitely bring these sort of things in. We have a lot of however many things. It's frustration. And I think we've all been there and we do what we can to try to help where we can. And I think we've all been there, and we do what we can to try to help where we can. Yeah, what's the point of the mayor's office? We handle budgets, we help everybody with many things, and we are your voice.
Got a real quick.
To help on certain matters. That's what we are here for. We are here to listen and to, uh, you know, propose changes, not just to affect the city, but to make your lives better. But also, you have to keep in mind that we also have to consider the balance within the city, which is something a lot of people, I think, forget. Is really important and key, um, to the, to the life and livelihood within this city, so.
Hell, yeah.
Please keep that in mind. Unfortunately, like, you, we, if you ever got in this office, you would start to, start to see what we have to experience, and it's much different. I've learned a lot since I've been here. All right, Jerry?
Uh, so recently, I sold my bike to someone and they handed me thirty grand. Is there a way I can, like, uh, have like a form to say, hey, yo, yeah, I'm not laundering money, I just sold my bike?
Uh, you can get legal contracts, uh, worked out with a lawyer, so that way you've got that, um, paperwork, uh, to explain it. But also, if you put on the transfer paperwork and, uh, the amount of money and whatnot, if it's a transfer, cash transfer, you can list for purchase of a bike. It would be obviously pretty easy to prove that the bike was purchased because the same day you'd see the exact same transaction.
All right, is there, I don't know if, like, they keep track of that somewhere, like, exchange of plates to and from individuals, but?
Yeah, what am I crying about? We're literally trolling the fuck out of this shit right now.
Yes.
All right, is there, like, records of that, that?
On the registration of the bike?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's where the records are. It's on the bike registration. If I open up my app on my phone, I can see who's owned it before me.
Wayne, just keep your fucking hand up, Wayne. Keep your hand up, so they listen, they, they find you.
Bro, Wayne, Wayne is on some fucking energy right now, man. He's a wagone.
Yeah, so now I know, uh, is fertilizer legal as well?
I, again, don't know, that's a DOJ question.
This is for Judge Crane, Judge Crane, you tell me, uh, that it's public rec- record, right? So apparently, there's a, a chal, some type of chal, right? A suspect got into Terranova's chal. Terranova got away, got shot, they catch him with seeds and fertilizer. You tell me, if I got caught with seeds and fertilizer, that's enough to raid my whole fucking house?
Did you read the whole police report?
I did, sir.
Okay, you're leaving out a lot.
Okay, fill me in, wagone.
Did you leave out the part where Terranova and his friend held up the police at gunpoint?
Uh, we, we not see that in the, in the case.
Yeah, you should read the police report.
Wayne, um, I suggest that perhaps you, if you have issues and, um, issues with your case, please bring it to the judge privately.
This is not my case, Mike. Y'all stop trying to shut me up. See, I'm gonna talk whenever the fuck I want. It's my turn for talk right now.
Wayne, Wayne, wait, double jeopardy, double jeopardy, Wayne.
Look, listen, listen, listen.
You're not making a lot of sense, to be honest.
Okay, that's cool. That's fine and dandy, big man. So you mean to tell me, holding up a police officer and later getting found with seeds and fertilizer, is enough for a raid?
And when the canine sniffs the vehicle that was used in holding up the police officer, and they find six hundred gram of packed weed in boxes labeled for distribution?
And whose car was that?
All of that together goes for a raid.
Whose car was that? The Sun King or the other man?
Do you know what constructive possession is?
I'm just asking a question, Mr. Crane. Was it in Terranova's Sun King or the other chal?
He was in possession of the car at the time.
Wayne, I'm gonna be real, this isn't constructive, and all it is, is letting everyone know Terranova's in for the nines for drug trafficking, so it's probably not good to talk about it here.
Shut the fuck up, big man, I'm still. I'm not, again, let me get, uh, the definition of double jeopardy under the constitution of Los Santos.
Sure, I can address this as well. So, in terms of double jeopardy, you are unable to be charged for the same crime twice in the same jurisdiction. However, the senate control the federal jurisdiction. We control the state. As a result, if they wish to bring charges against you in a federal court, they may.
Okay, you have three reasons for bringing me back to court in front of the senate. One of them is because we now have a dispensary, right? The other one is pretty much because we now have a dispensary.
The senate brought you to court.
You do me a favor, Mr. Crane, and look up the farmers market legislation. Tell me what you see there on the helpful information. Please, please, Mr. Crane, we've got, uh, we've got time.
In the meantime, in the meantime, can I take a question from Penny?
No, 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 he's gonna look it up real quick. Just read that for me, Mr. Crane, on the helpful information. Just read that first line for me.
The labeled dimension for items are one hundred by one hundred. The banner dimensions are ten twenty-four by ten twenty-four.
Farmers market legislation.
I'm reading the helpful information section. It's been updated.
Oh, so, wait, how long ago was it? Uh, yeah, yeah, sure. You know which part I'm talking about, Mr. Crane. You know exactly which part I'm talking about.
Wayne, just tell him the fucking part.
Can you just tell us, what are you talking about?
It says that I, Wayne Biggs, have the right to sell marijuana, seeds, and joints at the fucking farmers market. Full rights, by the way. But, the whole reason, the whole reason you want to bring me back to trial in front of the senate is because you say I'm not a dispensary.
Wait, wait, why are you saying you?
I'm talking about my case right now.
I didn't file a case, I'm not prosecutor, I'm a judge.
Okay, but they say, they want to bring me back because them saying I'm not a dispensary, when I clearly am a dispensary.
Okay, but, sir, here's the issue, uh, and we can have this conversation at a later time. Uh, you are taking up an entire room of people regarding other issues for your grabs about your case, which I can't, don't even control at this point.
Nah, people, am I taking up any of your time right now, or would you not like to get caught with double jeopardy as well? Everybody here, so, okay, thank you very much. Continue, Mr. Crane, the jury.
Who the fuck just said move the fuck on?
So I'm in the courtroom.
Who the fuck just said that? Who just said move the fuck on?
What is the question? Guys behind me on the right, I don't know, one of them.
All right, what is your question?
Make sure you say that at, at, at a courthouse later, right, buddy?
Am I a dispensary or not? Am I recognized as a dispensary?
Keep your same energy, motherfucker.
By the state of Los Santos, is that correct? Am I or not?
Well, given that I wasn't even a judge when this would have occurred, I have no idea, sir.
Okay, well, you motherfuckers saying that two of the reasons why you want to bring me back to case, to court in front of the fucking senate is because you say I'm not a dispensary.
There isn't a single police officer up here. They are the ones that pressed the charges against you. I don't know why you keep saying you.
Okay, and who holds a policeman accountable? Who signs the warrants? Who does all these things? You, right?
When are we gonna be allowed to contest raid warrants? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, I hear you, Mike, y'all. Keep talking.
Mr. Wayne, would you like to discuss this further with the judges after this town hall meeting? Because it seems like you're taking this all by yourself. There are other people waiting to ask questions.
Would you guys like to get caught with double jeopardy? People of the courtroom, is, am I wasting your time right now?
Hell, I don't want to get caught with double jeopardy, bro.
Football Sunday.
But it is double jeopardy.
No, it's not, because it's a different jurisdiction.
But he got found, you know what? I'm not, hold on, I, I don't want to be a dick, but he got found not fucking guilty.
Okay, let me ask you this, Vinnie. If I commit a crime in a different state, let's say California, and I steal a car. And let's say that I take that car across state lines, making it a federal issue. The state of California gets to press charges on me as well as the federal courts. If I'm found not guilty in the state court, it is irrelevant to the federal court case. They are separate issues.
But was, wait, 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 when did Wayne's case become federal?
When the senate took it, they are federal. Senators go to the federal government.
And who presented it to the senators is my question?
That would be the police department. You can read the filing on the docket.
So because the PD wasn't happy that Wayne got found not fucking guilty, they couldn't eat it up, so they had to go to federal now on Wayne. What kind of load of bullshit is this? So if you're telling me, if a motherfucker gets cleared of a murder charge, and if they feel like that's not the right fucking answer they wanted, they could go to federal and basically get fucked? And then the senate could take the case. Is that what you're really saying right now?
It sounds like.
Nah, they can do whatever they want.
So basically, what you're telling me is if somebody gets cleared, acquitted of fucking first degree murder, if, and, and if the, the cops are not happy with the decision, they could go to the senate and the senate could, okay, then bringing that back to trial?
That is their legal ability, yes.
Yo, fuck the police, man.
You motherfuckers saying I'm wasting time right now. This how you want your fucking city to be run, huh?
Yo, these motherfuckers get away with anything, bro, yo, fuck them. Yo, stand up, bro, stand up.
How is that even, like? How is that correct?
About to be riding on the streets.
Do you realize what this is gonna happen to the city if this shit continues, and Wayne is gonna be basically the fucking example of this? Do you guys, do you realize what this city's gonna turn into? On top of it, that you have a fucking sixty day statute of limitations now?
Oh.
Fuck. Chad, it's just gonna open up a can of worms, man, with everybody's cases. I mean, that's crazy, though, chat. That's, that's, how is that, like, that's, that is crazy. That is crazy, man, to think like, if I get convicted of something, the ju- the, the police department can appeal to the senate on anything. I don't get it. How is that fair to any civilian in the city? No, chat, listen, listen, stop with taking L's, cops taking L's, chat, chat, relax. Let's not talk about cops taking L's, yada, yada. I'm just talking in general, chat. It, it's just, it, it literally, if, if the cops, if, if the cops push a fucking, push a charge against somebody in the city, and if they feel like they're not happy with that decision from, from the judge, they could go to the next level. That, that's the, that's the, that's honestly the scary. What is it, a front?
Uh, I think so.
You know, that, that's, that's the scary part. Fuck L's and W's, chat, let's not talk about that.
That's what happened.
Let, let's not talk about W's and L's in general. If, 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 if somebody gets convicted, if somebody gets a not guilty charge, and if and if they're not happy with that, they could literally go to the senate all the time now. That's crazy.
Well, I can feel it, there are a lot of people in your head.
Yes.
Did everybody pop?
Nah, you knew too much, Vinnie, that's why, that's why you popped.
I'm just, listen, I'm just worried about other people out there, bro, like.
I got you, I got you, I got you. Appreciate you, brother. Yep, no problem.
I feel like, honestly, Ash, don't get mad at Benji that he was on my lap, okay? Listen, we, we, we have a long relationship.
He tried, he tried touching me.
Listen, he wanted to talk about the first thing that popped up. I told him, okay. What do you want me to do?
It's all right, uh.
Wait, this, this shit's over, what the fuck?
Actually, no, I shouldn't finish this, nevermind.
How you doing, Ash, though? I hope everything is good.
Mr. Presto.
Hey, Crane.
Yo, this fucking R sixty-six of this motherfucker.
If you want to, uh.
Yeah, let's go talk, come on, yeah.
These minds are not want to give me back my business, Vinnie. This fucking bullshit.
You want to go in the office?
Uh, somebody might be using it. Let me check real quick, give me a second.
Bodies are fucking dropping tonight, see? Bodies are fucking dropping.
Wayne's fucking losing his mind.
Two class twos, there's a lot of firepower in my ass.
Hello. Hi, Vinnie, welcome back.